Good evening. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening and welcome to the Davis City Council District 2 Candidate Forum, presented by the League of Women Voters Davis Area. I am Linda Lapp, coordinator, co-coordinator of the candidate forums for the Davis Area League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters is a national, nonpartisan volunteer organization founded in 1920 to educate and empower voters to exercise their rights in a democracy. The League encourages informed and active participation in government and works to increase voter understanding of public policy issues. A Davis chapter of the League was first established in Davis in 1957, and today, with over 100 members, is active in numerous civic activities, including nonpartisan candidate forums, voter registration and voter services, health care policy, and education about the city's general plan. Next year, Davis and Woodland chapters will unite to create the League of Women Voters of Yolo County. If you are not, yeah. Double the impact. If you are not already a member, we urge you to join us. You can sign up at the registration table. We wish to acknowledge the land on which we gather. For thousands of years, this land has been the home of the Potwin people, and the Potwin people have remained committed to its stewardship and protection. We are honored and grateful to be here tonight on their traditional homeland. The following are the standard rules applied to all League candidate forum events with a live, in-person audience, and we will be following at this evening's event. For the best experience of community civility and the democratic process, our League asks that everyone remain attentive, respectful, and considerate of both our candidates and our neighbors in the audience. We are grateful for the participation of tonight's candidates, Linda, Dylan, and Victor, and also very pleased to have the opportunity to have a live community member audience. Thanks also to those who will be watching the recorded version at home. Unfortunately, we were not able to stream it tonight. Tonight's event is not a forum for public comment, but is an opportunity to hear directly from the candidates. Opportunities for public comment are available at scheduled city council meetings. The event is being recorded, so we ask audience members to turn off their cell phones and refrain from video recording. All are welcome to view this forum in full anytime following the forum by visiting our League of Women Voters Davis Area website. Also, we ask audience members to refrain from commenting, applauding, or demonstrating support or disapproval of candidate responses, so all questions and answers can be clearly heard in the room and in the recording. Attendings causing disruption may be asked to leave. Our beautiful map up there. Tonight, in partnership with Davis Media Access, we are hosting a discussion of key Davis city issues with the candidates for District 2 council office. The winner of this race will represent District 2, which is the blue district on the map. As you know, the city council is the governing board for the city of Davis and is responsible for a wide range of policies and programs, including establishing city policies and city goals, approving resolutions, ordinances in the city budget, appointing and overseeing the city manager and city attorney, attending agency meetings, appointing advisory boards, commissions, and committees, and as council members serving on the Board of Directors of the Davis Public Facilities Financing Authority. Now I'd like to introduce our moderator, Michelle Famula, President of the League of Women Voters Davis Area, who will walk us through tonight's agenda and explain our forum process. Michelle?
Thank you, Lynn. Good evening. My name is Michelle Famula, and I'll serve as the moderator for this evening's forum. I'm joined by Nikki Neff, my fellow League member and tonight's timekeeper. This evening, our Davis City Council District 2 Candidate Forum is pleased to welcome candidates Linda Díos, Dylan Horton, and Victor Lagunas, vying for the representation of the city's District 2 open seat. Here is our forum process. Each candidate will give a 90-second opening statement. After opening statements, candidates will respond to five moderated questions. These questions were selected by members of the Davis League of Women Voters, and two of these questions were sent to the candidates prior to the forum. All candidates will have an opportunity to respond to each question, and each candidate will have a rotating opportunity to be the first respondent. After moderated questions, we'll move directly to audience questions, with each candidate once again having an opportunity at first response. We will end with closing statements in which each candidate will give a one-minute closing statement. Speaker order for both opening and closing statements was determined by a random coin toss held just before the starting of this forum. The candidates are seated on the panel in alphabetical order. By random process, we have identified that Linda Díos will start us off with a 90-second opening statement, followed by Victor Lagunas, and then Dylan Horton. Following opening statements, our five moderated questions will begin with each candidate having the opportunity at first response. Each candidate has 90 seconds for their primary response. Candidates will be shown a 15-second warning yellow card by our forum timekeeper and a red card when their time is ended. After primary responses from all candidates, I'll ask if any candidate wants to add a 30-second follow-up response. Candidates will be recognized in the order of their raised hand. Responses will be limited to a single follow-up response per question per candidate. Candidates will again be reminded of our timekeeper, by our timekeeper, of their time limit. Following our five moderated questions, we'll move directly to audience questions. All candidates will have an opportunity to give a one-minute response to each audience question, with the opportunity of first response again being rotated. After primary responses, I'll ask if any candidate wants to add a 30-second follow-up response. Following audience questions, we will move to the candidates' one-minute closing statements. And again, using our random process, we have identified that Linda will give the first closing statement, followed by Victor, and then Dylan. Here are the rules for the audience Q and A. In addition to the ground rules previously provided by our forum chair, there will be no intermission, and audience members are therefore encouraged to take breaks as needed. There will be no verbal audience questions or statements. All audience questions must be submitted in writing. Audience members have been given three-by-five cards to submit their questions during the first half of the forum. Please submit one question per card, and please keep questions brief, positive, related to the Office of City Council and applicable to all candidates. Please remain seated and simply pass the cards to the center aisle throughout the forum, where they will be collected by League volunteers. At about 8:10, I will ask everyone to pass any remaining written questions to the center aisle for collection. Questions will be screened and combined for similar questions, or to make sure we include a range of topics, or eliminate inappropriate questions. Finally, once again, we ask our in-person audience to refrain from any show of support or opposition to candidate comments. We also ask that you hold your applause as the candidates give their opening statements. At the end of the forum, I will ask all to join me with applause that acknowledges all candidates and thanks them for their service. Let's get started. We begin with each candidate's 90-second opening statement, and we will hear first from Linda Díos.
Hi, everyone. Thank you all for coming. This is very important, and it shows what engaged democracy is all about. So thank you for being part of that engagement. You know, I'm doing this because of love. I moved to Davis for love. The woman of my dreams lived here. I fell in love, and it went on and on and on, in that I fell in love with the community. I fell in love with our parks. I fell in love with our neighbors. I fell in love with everything that Davis represents. That just drove me to want to give back more and more to this community. And I've been doing that, everything from being on the time called the Interfaith Rotating Winter Shelter, providing food and shelter to our folks, being there with the Yellow Food Bank during the COVID crisis, to stepping up and serving with our city, being on our utilities commission, putting in the years to understand the true skeleton of this city. What makes it? What goes on when you flush that toilet? What goes on when you turn on that water? What goes on when it does rain? And it will rain someday again. So it gave me a great basis in order to move forward here. Also, I'm now on our planning commission. What a wonderful place to be in order to see what's coming down the pike and development things coming up for discussion and other issues before the city. And during this time as well, I stepped up and took on the Democratic Party for Yolo County, took it out of the red, put it into the black, so that we can raise money for candidates around the country and in California. And I know this is necessarily a partisan thing, but I'm proud of my work there and want to make sure I'm clear about that. So why, again, I'm doing this for love, moving forward with love. I've got the experience as well of being a bankruptcy attorney, understanding finances, understanding how to read the budgets, understanding how to find that fat in the budgets. So I invite you to look more and see what I'm, look on my website, see what I'm all about, lindadios.com, and I would be honored to earn your votes. Thank you.
Thank you. And now the 90-second opening statement from candidate Victor Lagunas.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for being here, and to those that are going to watch it later after the recording, and secondly, to the League of Women Voters for putting this on. This is such an important event to keeping our electorate informed on issues that are local, and I really appreciate that. A lot of my background is influenced by the values of service and community, and that is why I became an educator. I became a classroom teacher here in Davis 12 years ago, and I wanted to serve our youth. And through that position, I also learned that there was another opportunity for service for our educators and our schools across the district, and that led me to become the president of Davis Teacher Association for now three terms as elected executive of the DTA. And now what I think that that really leads me to is recognizing that, again, there's another opportunity for service to be able to address new issues, those that are not centered solely around our students, their families, and the success of our schools, but of our community, ones that I think that are growing needs, that have been historically present, and those that we do not know yet which will come. And so I believe that my skills in leadership and my commitment to this community and the integrity with which I have acted over the last seven years as DTA president, 12 years as a teacher, and the various ways that I have committed myself to this community are of great need on city council to be able to address the issues of housing, climate, our local commerce, and our fiscal health. And I look forward to being able to earn your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. And now our third opening statement, candidate Dylan Horton.
Thank you so much. My name is Dylan Horton, and I'm running for Davis City Council because there's a lot of great things that draw us to move to Davis from so many places around the world. I'm from LA, but the problem, I think, is that so many of those great attributes about our community have become reserved for an ever-shrinking circle of people. I'm running for Davis City Council to expand the circle of people who are considered to be a Davisite, considered to be a part of our community, because people who work hard every day, making our city the way that it is, making it the city, the city that we love, are people who deserve to have housing in this community, deserve to be able to provide for their families. As I said before, I grew up in LA. I was raised by a single mother who was a nurse and a veteran. She always reminded me that if you're not a part of the solution, you're a part of the problem. That's why I've spent my entire adult life working to enact meaningful change, whether it's advocating for affordable housing, criminal justice reform, or labor rights. I've led efforts to reform our public safety systems here in Davis, working with the Coalition of Concerned Residents to create the Davis Department of Social Services and Housing. But there's more work to do. If elected, my top priorities will be expanding affordable housing in the community, boosting equitable economic development, and making sure that our community is more inclusive and accessible. At the end of the day, I'm committed to making Davis a place where no one is left out and left behind. We have an opportunity to build a city that works for everyone, and I'm asking for your support so we can make that vision a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. We will now move to the five moderated questions that have been prepared by our League of Women Voters Forum Committee members. Each candidate, once again, will have a 90-second opportunity to respond, and rotating the first response, we will continue forward with Victor.
Did you ask the question?
Oh, yes, that's a good idea.
I mean, I haven't, but...
Now, if I'll ask the question, that'll help. Question number one. How would you assess and improve the financial health of the city of Davis?
Thanks so much. You know, I think that a budget is a statement of priorities, and I think that when you view it that way, then our priority should be the service to the community and the residents of Davis. And so I believe that, you know, you asked me to assess it, and I would say, "needs improvement" is a great way to put that. I believe that this is a critical time for us to really consider where we are at economically and think about potentially being able to grow our economic development, not just through a ballot measure that's on right now for a sales tax, Measure Q, but through other avenues as well. And so the reason I believe this to be so important, and I believe I mentioned it in my opening campaign, if not, or opening comment, if not, I was remiss, is that I think that the small businesses of our community are essential, not just economically, but also as an aspect of community, so that we have a familiarity with people and not products. And my history is in education, but my family are small business owners, and so this is something that I'm uniquely concerned with. And I think that when we talk about our, you know, our economic development, we talk about our businesses and the need for a greater tax base. And so I think that it's important that our city has currently gone through and hired an economic development director in order to have outreach and try and find more incubators to start businesses of the well-trained and educated people coming out of UC Davis, and also that our partnerships with our local nonprofits continue to thrive so that we can continue to have their services. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next candidate, Dylan, how would you assess and improve the financial health of the city of Davis? 90 seconds.
Thanks so much. So in terms of the fiscal, you know, outlook of the city and the fiscal health of the city, I think we are in a concerning situation in terms of our fiscal health and our fiscal house. And that's something that we really need to tackle head-on as a challenge, because it's only through a robust and well-managed general fund that we can fund all of the services that people in Davis rely on. As I've talked to voters who are trying to make up their mind about how to vote on Measure Q later this year, I've heard a lot of folks who think that the city has challenges managing the money that we already give them. And I think that if we are looking to create an environment where more people are willing to entrust putting more tax revenue into the city's hands, we have to rebuild the trust that I think has been broken over a number of years. We need to better outreach to affected residents before we formulate new projects or policies so we don't do one project, one, two, three times over like the Mace mess. We need to better utilize local expertise instead of paying several thousand dollars to an out-of-town consultant for almost everything we do as the city. If we do these things, we'll rebuild broken trust with Davis voters and at the same time be better stewards of our city finances. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, how would you assess and improve the financial health of the city of Davis? Linda?
There we go. We're the, you know, we have the same constraints that all cities in California have because of Prop 13. I mean, we all are struggling to find ways to raise money to help out with different programs within the city. I mean, Prop 13 kind of puts a kibosh on many things that the city would like to be able to do. So that means we need to be frugal with our money. We need to make sure we are spending it wisely. And looking for grants has been a great example. We just got in a $24 million grant for a road project, for the cool surfaces for our roads. And yes, we definitely need to be promoting our economic development. I think that's very important, and we have a wonderful new employee on board for doing that, and that's Katie Yancy. And she's already doing outreach to the business community and seeing exactly what do they want, what do they need, how can we help do that, to help them come forward. I see, I mean, Measure Q is important, but it's a bridge. It's a bridge for what we need going forward. I mean, it's going to be $11 million. That's a good percentage of our general budget, of our general fund. So we build trust. How do you build trust? You put people there that you trust, that you know are going to do the job right. And who's somebody who can do that? How about a bankruptcy attorney? Somebody who's been looking at financial documents for 25 years? Somebody who's been looking at budgets, going in and looking at businesses and people and saying, "Here's what you need to do. That's what I'm going to bring to the city." Thank you.
You each have an opportunity for a 30-second follow-up. Does anyone want to provide a 30-second follow-up? Is Dylan?
So I wanted to talk a little bit about my experience in this area. Earlier, I think as a 19-year-old, I was a member of a bond oversight committee for one of California's largest bond funds for at least community college facilities building. And so my job was every month to, you know, be at those meetings, making sure that the promises that they made on the campaign trail in terms of how they were going to spend their money were actually what they were doing in terms of spending their money. So taking that, you know, principled leadership of valued censored, excuse me, leadership to our fiscal management is something that I think I'm quite prepared for. Thank you.
Yes. Linda?
I do want to follow up. I believe up here, I'm the only small business owner that's on the dais here. I own my law firm. I have to meet payroll. I have to meet overhead, so I can understand what's going on with our business leaders here in town, and what's happening, and the constraints that they're under, and the importance of bringing in the dollars. So, thank you.
Thank you. Opportunity, Victor?
Thank you. I think that what needs to be said is that through my role as DTA president, we advocate for many things for our schools, and that is, that requires analysis and oversight of a budget of $120 million, which is roughly 40% larger than the general fund of the city. And in order to do that, or we do that in order to talk about salary and benefits for employees and services to our students. And I want to bring that same sort of analysis and oversight that I've had as DTA president to our city council and our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to question two. What should be done to make the city more attractive to retail businesses and reduce the number of vacant storefronts? Once again, you'll each have 90 seconds to respond, and we begin first with Dylan.
Thanks so much. You know, I think part of the reason that we're in a strained fiscal situation as a city is that it's really difficult to start and operate a small business in Davis. And that's why the second plank in my agenda is boosting equitable economic development. We do that by stepping up our game in terms of staff support to small businesses. That is something that I got a lot of pointers on in a Small Business Owners Roundtable that I did a couple of years ago, and a member, an individual from, who owned Super Owl Brewing showed up there. And he talked about how neighboring cities are having their staff proactively support folks who are aspiring to start a small business. And this is something that the city of Davis did, you know, not too long ago. We need to get back to doing that. We also need to focus on infrastructure improvements, including working with our other local government partners to provide expanded access to internet here in the city of Davis. That's something that residents rely on, but also business owners rely on as well. Additionally, we need to make it easier to start entry-level businesses like food trucks and pop-ups. These are things that, you know, if you're a first-time person who's starting a business, it's a lot easier to find the money to be able to do that than it is to be able to start the next brick and mortar, you know, Burgers &amp; Brew. So we need to make sure that it's easier for people who don't have their daddy and their daddy's daddy's money to be able to start a business, to be able to do that in the city of Davis. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, question two. What should be done to make the city more attractive to retail businesses and reduce the number of vacant storefronts? Linda?
Thank you. I think a look at developing an economic strategy plan for our downtown. Let's engage our business owners. Let's find out exactly what they need, what they want. Ask them what's important. Ask them what the impediments are for them going forward and building up their business or starting a new business. I love to see a diversification of what we have downtown. I think we are at about 20 boba shops right now, and perhaps we can have some other things there, but nothing wrong with boba. You know, and keeping the city clean would be great. I mean, I was part of the Davis Sparkle. It was a couple of weeks ago. Went downtown, and we're scrubbing the streets and trimming the trees and doing that, and that was great. But that was an integration with our Downtown Davis Waste Management Plan that's in development, because we've had the expansion of our food choices. That's also meant an expansion of garbage. And so we need to be on top of picking that up and making sure that that's happening. And I want to make a point with regard to the vacancy rate. You know, it's not as high as we might think, just because we have this new development out on Second Street, that big warehouse that kind of popped our vacancy rate up from kind of a normal rate to that 17% to 18%. So let's be clear on what the facts are around that. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, question two. What should be done to make the city more attractive to retail businesses and reduce the number of vacant storefronts? Victor?
Great, thank you. So one of the things that I gave as background is that my family do come from small business owners, and I think that when I mention that as part of community, I think that the really important part is the effect that we feel. So hopefully you all have already gone to visit Fluffy Donuts as it's reopened, and it's over in West Davis. Super happy about that, especially right around the corner from work. But, you know, in discussing the things that are impacting small businesses with their owners, the thing that comes up most is the high cost of rent and the need to close up shop because they can't, you know, be able to make the demands of the cost of rent as business owners. And so really, I see that when, you know, the question talks about how do we make it attractive, I think that we need to, one, ensure that we are increasing the number of people that are coming and purchasing in our areas, and including specifically the downtown area. And I think some of the concerns that are in our community right now are about the cleanliness of the downtown area, but also about the variety of shops and businesses. So, you know, it is, there are a lot of eateries that are downtown, and while my students may disagree with the boba comment, I think that, you know, it is indicative of what we're seeing a lot of the downtown area look like. And to have more variety and to attract a greater variety of retail businesses would make it something that more people would want to aspire to come to and therefore enjoy rather than avoid.
Thank you. Do any of you have a 30-second follow-up comment? No? 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 Yes?
Yeah, I think that the vacancy rate, I mean, while it may seem inflated because of certain developments that are waiting to get filled, I do think that that's also part of the attractive component of our areas. You know, the greater the vacancy rate, then the fewer people are going to shop in those areas, and that can be effective, or affecting some of our other commercial zones that are not just in the downtown area. You know, driving by one, you might see two, three empty shops, and then so you recognize that there's very limited attraction to those places, and therefore that's going to impact what businesses want to be there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to question three. How should the city finance and implement the downtown plan, including the renovation of G Street? You each have 30 seconds. We begin first with Linda.
How should the city finance the development of G Street?
If I can reread it, I'll happily reread it.
Yeah, sorry, because I was trying to take notes.
How should the city finance and implement the downtown plan, including the renovation of G Street?
Thank you. Well, sales tax dollars would go a long ways, and if we pass Measure Q, then we're going to have more money coming in for that purpose exactly. Gosh, we've got user fees. We've got other fees that can be used downtown. We've got licensing fees. We just discussed at the planning commission the other night, folks who want to have outdoor dining, and that would include on G Street. And we were discussing, well, how do we streamline that? How do we help the folks who want to have that type of dining experience and help the business owners know that there's not three, four, or five forms to fill out? There's only one form they need to fill out, describing what it is exactly that they want to do. So I think it's streamlining our processes will make a big difference, and that's already covered with our staff time. In fact, we're not even charging businesses for that initial look at what they want to do downtown. Along with that, if they do want to do a larger development, say what's happened at Burgers &amp; Brew, they're going to be putting a deposit down to pay for the staff looking that over, figuring out what needs to be done, and going forward from there. So that would be my response.
Thank you. Again, question three. How should the city finance and implement the downtown plan, including the renovation of G Street? Victor?
Great, thanks so much. So I think that one of the things that's key is being able to take the input of the businesses, and I know that that was, you know, an area of concern and possibly, you could say, an area of growth for the city when it comes to G Street activation and engaging with the business community on what their wants and needs are in order to, you know, keep the doors open and be able to attract people. And so when I consider, you know, when I consider... And so when I consider, you know, when I consider the question in particular for the renovation of G Street, I think first about the outreach in order to get that feedback and then the funding sources. I think that, you know, considering the number of fees that go into the various forms that are required in terms of permits for businesses and the time that they take for them to be able to open those doors, that can be a really significant challenge for small businesses. And so while those fees are there for us to be able to fund those things, they can actually hamper small businesses longevity and sustainability in the initial stages. So I think that that may be one way, but I really think that, you know, the investment in the passage of Measure Q is going to be a piece of that in order to have the funds to be able to do that as well as if you take a look at what other sorts of grants we might be able to apply for, that could be applicable to the downtown zone in particular, that could be used not just in G Street activation, but also for growing our canopy downtown, which has had its own challenges and making it more inviting, as well as so much of the deferred maintenance that's necessary for our roads.
Thank you. Again, how should the city finance and implement the downtown plan, including the renovation of G Street? Dylan?
Thank you. So this is, I think, a part of the long-term planning or financial management challenges that I was talking about with regard to our city finances a few moments ago. It's, you know, a lot more difficult for the city to manage funding and facilitating a project that is, you know, going to come up in the middle of, you know, the fiscal budgeting cycle and is not a part of, again, the city's long-term financial planning, particularly when we're talking about really expensive items in terms of infrastructure and sort of how we're shaping and designing our neighborhoods and communities. It's really important, again, that if we're going to get our fiscal house in order as a community, we make sure that we are maybe, you know, being willing to accept some delayed gratification in terms of having some of these projects come a little bit further down the pike when we can manage financing them a little bit more appropriately. Then in terms of beyond just sort of our general revenue funds, I think it's important that we work with, you know, nothing in Davis works without a public-private partnership. And so I think working with our partners in the Chamber of Commerce and the Davis Downtown Business Association, I think we'll be able to figure out how to finance some of those things along with working with our intergovernmental, local government partners like Secog, who helps us, you know, power through financially a whole bunch of things in the community that are really important for Davis residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, there's an opportunity for a 30-second follow-up if any of you would like to add an additional comment. Seeing none? Seeing none? Okay. We'll move on to question number four. Question number four. Affordable housing is beyond the reach of most public employees as well as many of our adult children who want to remain in Davis. What actions should the city council take to improve the situation? You each have 90 seconds. We begin first with Victor.
I'd like to request an extension. Have five minutes, please. I think that affordable housing is a critical need for us. And it's not just capital A affordable housing that, you know, people are qualifying for, but housing affordability as well. So, you know, when you look at, you mentioned public employees, I mean, one of the things that we talk about frequently is the educators, the 45% of educators that can't afford to live in the community that they teach in. And so there is a significant need for us to address not just capital A affordability, affordable housing, but affordability as well. And I think that pushing for design that is either higher in density or lower in square footage, that is at price points that are more accessible for individuals, I think that investment in our housing trust funds so that we can provide assistance to those with down payment assistance, so that they can start building their own equity in those smaller size and more affordable units are really impactful ways that we can truly, you know, move the needle on the number of people that are, we're able to include in Davis as part of our housing. And I really think that besides the affordability, it's ultimately the stock as well, so that that way there is less strain on the number of renters that are part of our community and that there's more single-family homes that are made available for individuals that are looking to come here and start families as well.
Thank you. Again, the fourth question. Affordable housing is beyond the reach of most public employees as well as our grown children who want to remain in Davis. What actions should the city council take to improve the situation? Dylan?
Thanks so much. This housing crisis really, it hasn't affect, you know, it's not leaving anyone untouched in terms of its impact over the past few years and past few generations in our community. About half of our population are renters and, you know, they've gone unrepresented, I think, for far too long on the Davis City Council. I'd be the first renter elected in a long time, I think, to represent folks on the Davis City Council. It's important that we, in terms of making affordable housing more accessible to people, that we prioritize building more workforce housing, building more mixed-use developments, building more market-rate housing so that students, families, seniors, and working folks can all afford to live in town. We really need to be sure that we are strengthening the Renters' Resources Program. At this point, it, you know, levies fees on noncompliant landlords in town. At this point, the fees are too small to be a credible disincentive to bad behavior or finance the program anything more than a part-time city staffer right now. We need to make sure that the First Time Home Buyer Program has money in the piggybank. Folks like myself who would want to be able to utilize the program to transition out of rental housing aren't able to utilize that today to move through the housing continuum. And I think that's really a shame in terms of housing justice in our community. We need to also utilize the city's owned property to advance workforce housing that's, you know, critical for our police officers, firefighters, teachers, and so many folks who, again, work so hard in our community but aren't able to take a part in Davis's quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, question four. Affordable housing is beyond the reach of most public employees as well as our grown children who want to remain in Davis. What actions should the city council take to improve the situation? Linda?
Well, thank you for bringing this question forward. I think it's the most important issue facing our community and I'm not surprised that all three of us are kind of on the same page here. We need more housing. We just downright need more housing. And I think back, my wife, her first home here was a split-lot duplex. She came to Davis in 1986. We stopped building those. We stopped building those small homes that people could start with. And that's that affordability by design. We need to return to that again. Get more density on the lots. Get more density going up, going around. Build those duplexes. Build those triplexes. Build all of those. But we have to link transportation with density. We can't just go, you know, say out on the Mace Curve, for example, and build a lot of density out there and not have a way for people to get around because that's just going to add other issues to our community. So I think we definitely need to link that together with a transportation plan. And I agree that I believe we need to do this through public and private partnerships. I think we, the city can't do this alone. We don't know how to be a landlord. We don't know how to do these programs. We have partners that do mutual housing in California, mutual housing at the area. We've got community meals here who have done housing in the past. Think of Paul's Place. So let's work together in making that happen. And if I had the answer to fixing affordable housing in California, I think I'd be running for a higher office. So, thank you.
Thank you. There is an opportunity again for a 30-second follow-up. Is there anyone that would like to make an additional 30-second comment?
Dylan?
Sure, no problem. I just wanted to talk about a little sort of, you know, a case study of this issue. Just, you know, a couple of yards from here, essentially, we're going to have the soon-to-be former school district headquarters, right? A place right smack in the middle of town and was on the edge of town, you know, when it was originally built, right? And, you know, there's a lot of question and conversation in the community about what that property is going to be used for. I think that's a great opportunity for the city and the school district to work together to advance workforce housing, particularly with our teachers and so many other city employees. Thank you.
Thank you. And Victor, did you have a follow-up?
Yes, I did. I actually was really happy that workforce housing was brought up by both of you because I think that this is something that I put a lot of work into as DTA president in partnership with DJUSD and the trustees, talking about the issues that are really impacting our employees and what could get them into our community. And we've done a lot of work on salary and benefits. So since my time as leader of Davis Teachers Association, our salary and benefits have improved beyond inflation. And we've done a lot of work on that, but that still has not moved us any closer to making it more affordable. And so that's where workforce housing became part of the discussion, so that there's a part of that program and I'd love to partner with the city on that.
Thank you. And Linda, did you have a follow-up?
Sure. And this is going to sound like that broken record, but again, if you want to get this work done, turn to somebody who has the experience to get the work done. Somebody who is serving on our Planning Commission now, somebody who's been part of this community for years and somebody who knows how to bring partners together to, again, get it done. Thank you.
As we are approaching 10 after 8, I need to remind the audience that now would be the time to complete their written questions and pass them forward to the center aisle so that our league volunteers can pick those up. And while they're doing that, I'll move on to our fifth and final moderated question. Our final moderated question. Our streets and parks are not in good shape. What should be done to make them safer and more welcoming? We begin first with Dylan.
Look, every District 2 resident knows the consequences of deferred maintenance. You can just take a trip down Oak Avenue in District 2 or a trip down one of our North Davis bike paths or where I live on Alvarado Avenue. This is an economic development issue. This is an environmental justice issue and this is an economic justice issue all at the same time. One of the things that we need to really concentrate on in terms of city leadership is better outreach to the community. You know, I mentioned sort of the Mace Mess earlier. You know, this is a situation where I think could have been avoided if we had better outreach to the neighboring, you know, communities, the affected folks. I know this is outside of our district, but I think this is, again, a good case study for how we, I think, have maybe gotten this wrong and a path to how we can get it better in the future. I think we need to improve public transit, you know, in infrastructure, excuse me, in the community. Of course, this includes bus stop benches, shelters, making sure that, you know, there's a conversation in city council a couple of months ago about making sure that there's enough of a spread of our bus stops. We need to make sure that we are prioritizing these improvements in the areas and neighborhoods in most intense need first. And that's, I think, again, a way that we can build better trust in the community for how the City of Davis spends and manages its finances. Thank you.
Again, question five. Our streets and parks are not in good shape. What should be done to make them safer and more welcoming? Linda?
I got it right there, Tom, and who went next? Again, that was one of the things I fell in love with coming to Davis, were those green belts in our parks. The streets, not so much. I too shared the street of Alvarado with Dylan here and go down it all the time. It's a problem. The bike paths are a problem. That's the way that our children get to school and I want to make sure they can get to school safely. That's the whole reason why they were built, how they were built to lead kids to the schools. How can we fix it? What can we do about it? Well, one thing we can do is pass Measure Q. That's going to make a big difference in moving that forward. But safer and more welcoming? I look at lighting. I look at getting rid of the fox tails. I get those other little sticky things that get into my dog's paws that come into the house. That's going to be a partnership in making that happen. You know, can neighbors adopt parts of parks? See if I can get that out. Again, working together in community with Trees Davis, other organizations, moving forward to make Davis as welcoming as we want it to be. And thank you.
Thank you. Again, our final moderated question. Our streets and parks are not in good shape. What should be done to make them safer and more welcoming? Victor?
Yeah, so I think that part of this starts with, you know, the sheer number of them and who they're used by. I mean, our university students and the faculty that are part of the university also use them besides our students, which I'm glad came up because, you know, I think that from my perspective, those, you know, those are, you're looking at commuter lanes. And so, you know, it's important to recognize that there is some partnership between the city and the school district on that. They are about to hire a new safe routes to school coordinator to ensure that our students are making it to their school campuses safely and I think that addresses part of that question. But we're talking about 118 miles of bike lanes throughout the city. And when we talk about deferred maintenance on those and when that was needed, starting up to even 10 years ago, and how we haven't done a lot of maintenance on our roads and bike paths, it's obvious that, you know, Dylan mentioned the roller coaster that is Oak when you're below DHS. I mean, there's two, there's two speed bumps there that don't need to be there at all with the conditions of the roads. And so I really think that it's quite obvious that, you know, the maintenance is necessary and part of the rationale for Measure Q. But, you know, in terms of safety, we also have to consider our growing climate changes. And we have more triple-degree weather that's out there and we have many water fountains that are not in operation around our green belts. And for those that take advantage of our parks, that's really something that's necessary for both us as humans, but also, you know, our animal, our pets that are out there. And we need to really consider our canopy and shade coverage along those areas as well.
Thank you. Again, the opportunity for a 30-second follow-up? Anyone? No one? All righty.
Oh, if I may.
Certainly.
Yeah. So I think that the other consideration is that the bike path is a current infrastructure that we have that's wonderful. And interestingly, you know, both of you brought up where you live. I don't live that far away because it's a district and I've taken a lot of advantage of being there. And I think that the other part of this is that a continued investment in our green belts and our bike paths is necessary. And that means that if we have any new developments, that those are planned to expand our bike paths and green belt areas as well, so that it's not just where they exist now.
Thank you.
Oh, have a follow-up? Sure. I just want to follow up on that point of, you know, with new developments, having new parks, new bike paths, et cetera, and connecting to everything, I want to make sure those can be paid for. I want to make sure that we're placing the burden properly so that it's not all on the city because we're having a hard time keeping up now with what we have. So when we are adding more capacity, let's make sure we are adding, finding mechanisms to cover that capacity. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes?
I thought of something too. Anyway, so I was, I had a meet and greet on Sycamore, sort of as you're going to Trader Joe's not too long ago. And goodness, I feel like two-thirds of the people who showed up at that forum talked about street safety issues in that portion of Sycamore. People ripping and running up and down that freeway, they think it's a freeway, ripping and running up and down that street, you know, with really no regard to pedestrian and biker safety, excuse me. And so I think it's not really necessarily a matter of how good that condition, the condition of the road is, but how safe it is for people to travel down. I think that's something that we need to concentrate on as leaders in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that concludes the questions from our league members and we'll now move to the audience questions. Please note where multiple questions have been received with a similar topic wording may be somewhat different than how it was received. Each candidate may provide a one-minute response and a single 30-second follow-up. First responses will be, again, rotated between candidates. Question one. How will you stay engaged with District 2 citizens if elected? And we begin first with Linda.
Thank you. I think engagement is key and that's come up quite a lot with all of our responses here. Part of the things that I'm, two things that I'm going to be doing is one, holding quote-unquote "office hours" at our local Pete's. I have the flexibility in my schedule to do that and be available for people to reach me. I'm also going to be doing a newsletter out to people. If any of you have been in Don Staler or in Lucas Farrick's districts, you've seen those newsletters going out. I want to keep you informed. I want you to know what's going on and how to get hold of me. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question. How will you stay engaged with District 2 citizens if elected? Same question, "How will you stay engaged with District 2 citizens if elected?" Victor.
Honestly, engagement is one of the things that I have found most important as my role as a leader. And what I know is that what it takes to conduct outreach, especially in DTA, which is an organization of 540 members, is that if you build it, they will not come. You have to do the active work to reach out to people and ensure that you are not just hearing, but listening to them, and the variety of different things. You know, as part of the role that we take as candidates, we're knocking on doors, and the number of different stories I hear about concerns for our district and our city, and ones that are even at odds, really do require a lot of consideration. And you only do that by actively, you know, conducting that outreach. And so I want to take that perspective, organizing perspective, of engaging our District 2 as well as all city residents in order to, you know, surface issues, concerns, and then try and find a path forward and solutions to those concerns and challenges. Thanks.
Thank you. Again, the question is, "How will you stay engaged with District 2 citizens if elected?" Dylan.
Thank you so much. You know, if you know me at all, you probably know me as an activist and organizer in this community. And so, you know, keeping up with the public engagement is a really high priority of mine if elected to the Davis City Council. You know, you see sort of coffees with the cop, at least it's something that I'm very familiar with, is the chair of the Police Accountability Commission. One of the things I want to do is coffees with the council member. You know, a periodic thing that we're doing every once in a while for folks to be able to engage with me, ask questions, bring up concerns. You know, there are things that I think we can learn as a council member in terms of doing neighborhood walkthroughs of concerning issues and finding out about more concerns that people have in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. 30-second follow-up? Anyone? All right, I'll move to the next audience question. "What would you say to young people and students like my peers who won't be voting in this election? And what will you do to make local government work for them, too?" And we begin first with Victor.
I'm sorry, can you repeat again the question?
Yeah, it's kind of a two-parter, so I guess you can pick how you want to answer. "What would you say to young people and students like my peers who won't be voting in this election? And what will you do to make local government work for them, too?"
I guess I would first ask why they're not voting in this election, and is it because they're not yet 18, or do they live outside of the district? And either way, I think there's a lot of things to be done to engage people. You know, our county has a youth commission, and while I understand that, you know, commissions currently have a lot of other focus right now in terms of their condensing, but I do believe that there has to be something in terms of empowering the youth voice in our community so that there's more activities. If you consider those that are between the ages of 15 and 20, what is there to do in this community? Right? It's quite limited, and I hear that concern come up a lot. And so I think that, you know, making sure that there is an opportunity for voice in that is important. And then the next one is, if we're talking about somebody that's a youth that is living outside of District 2, well, unfortunately, that is a reality that we're all going to deal with, which is there are many of you, even in the audience tonight, who can't vote in this election because of the districting lines. But I don't think that that should limit your ability to have access to somebody as a leader and somebody that will be responsive. And that's what I've done as a DTA president, and I'd like to do on City Council.
Thank you. Again, the question, "What would you say to young people and students like my peers who won't be voting in this election? What will you do to make local government work for them, too?" Dylan.
Another thing, if you know anything about me, is that, you know, working with young leaders, particularly student leaders, is a big part of my activism and my outreach in the community. And I think it's a shame that so many folks, including so many young people, have lost faith in what politics and what government can do in their lives. My experience is that, you know, I used to be young once, but millennials and Zoomers, I think, are issue-based voters. They're, you know, not really looking for the vibes, they're looking for progress on issues that matter in their lives. And I think it's critically important that if we want more young people to be willing to vote in any election, not just a Davis City Council election, we need to, as government leaders, as a local government, as this dais, make more progress on the issues that working-class Davisites are, you know, facing in their lives every day. We need to make more progress on expanding access to quality, affordable housing, making it easier to start and operate a small business in this community. If we make progress on these things, young people will, you know, develop faith again. I think that government can work for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, "What would you say to young people and students like my peers who won't be voting in this election? What will you do to make local government work for them?" Linda.
Be available. Have them come and talk to me. Be a member of this community and be somebody who is of the LGBTQ community. I would be the first openly lesbian elected to this office. Having that presence is huge. Same thing if Dylan were to be elected in this. I think that is so important. When I was growing up, thinking about coming out, doing that, it was like, oh, Harvey Milk was just assassinated, I'm going back into that closet. It wasn't safe. It was not safe for me to come out and showing what is possible. We just had the Youth Leadership Forum on campus, you know, where all the high school students are coming together, and we're at different tables. Listen to them. Listen to what they have to say. Don't tell them what's going on. Listen to what's important to them and convey, hey, I see why you're talking about climate change. Here's what I'm going to do about that. Here's what Davis is doing about that. Come and join, come and join me at a council meeting. Join me for a day. Join me for a week. See what this is all about. Thank you.
Thank you. The opportunity for a 30-second follow-up? Yes, Dylan?
Really only just because Linda brought it up. You know, I think that young voters, again, as I said a second ago, are issue-based voters. I think that's really what they focus on. But to the extent that it matters to anyone in terms of representation, in Davis's 107-year history, they've never elected an openly LGBT person to the Davis City Council, and they've never elected an African-American to the Davis City Council in a community that it was illegal for people who looked like me to be able to own a home not a super-long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you. 30-second follow-up? Anyone else? Yes, Victor?
Thank you. I think that the other thing, when you consider as part of the question, young voters, and I'm assuming now, perspective of university-age students, is that we have to make sure that they can be engaged simply by ensuring that needs are being met. The generation of students that are attending UC Davis is vastly different now than it was even when I was an attendee 13 years ago or so. And so the levels of housing insecurity, the levels of students that are on social, you know, social supports like CalFresh, they're a lot higher. And so you can imagine that if your needs, your basic needs are not being met, then that's going to limit your ability to engage and access what local government is about. And I think voicing that is why I was willing to, or able to get the endorsement of the Davis College Democrats.
Thank you. Any additional 30-second follow-up, Linda? Okay, thank you. All right, we move on to our next question. "How can City Council help Davis be more climate-ready?" And we begin first with Dylan.
Thanks so much. You know, I think it's important that we start off by recognizing that, as I shuffle my papers around, that we're not, you know, about to get into a climate crisis, that we're already in the midst of one. I think leaders in this community, particularly leaders who are aspiring to be on the Davis City Council, also have to recognize the inequities that are present in our climate crisis. There's a problem right now that some folks, particularly in Cool Davis and in other groups, are talking about in terms of incentivizing or better incentivizing landlords to upgrade energy efficiency in their properties. You know, at this point, if you're a homeowner, you pay the energy cost and you are responsible for doing the energy efficiency upgrades. There's a disconnect for that for renters, where we're paying the energy cost but not in control of the energy efficiency of the places that we're living in. It's important that we align housing development with sustainable transportation, and it's also important that we make sure that we are taking a look at expanding our tree canopy in a community where we, again, are in the midst of a housing crisis, a housing crisis, climate crisis already. Thank you.
Thank you. The same question, "How can City Council help Davis be more climate-ready?" Linda.
Thank you. Well, we need to support the CAP, the Climate Action Adaptation Plan. It's already been implemented, but we need to have the funding to put those implementations happening, to make that happen. I was kind of convoluted. So let's support it, what we've already done. Secondly, we're going to be having a general plan update. Part of a general plan update is what's called the circulation element. So that's where we look at, what's our bike plan? What is our pedestrian plan? How do we make it transit-friendly? Those are things that are going to go towards making our community more climate resilient. We've talked a lot about, you know, what can we do for tree cover, always important, of course, that makes a huge difference, but we have all this sun energy, and so what can we do with that? Let's work with Valley Clean Energy. Let's work with our regional partners on battery storage, for example. We in Davis can't do that alone, it's too expensive. But what we can do is work with our other partners throughout the county and come together on that. Thank you.
How can City Council help Davis be more climate-ready? Victor.
Yeah, maybe if I just share, you know, I think that a year ago in October, Acapulco, Mexico, was hit by a hurricane, a category-five hurricane. And I don't know if you know this, but it just happened again. They were hit by a tropical storm as a result of a hurricane. So I appreciate that Dylan brings up that this is not something that is on its way, it is here, it's a reality that we have to deal with. And so I really do think that, you know, the adaptation mitigation methods that we take to try and address these are extremely important. Electrification of homes and retrofitting is really important in terms of being more energy efficient, but it does have costs associated with it. And I think that trying to find creative solutions by partnering with our local realtors to talk about point-of-sale retrofits has been a challenge and a barrier and something that we need to be able to, you know, be able to find those solutions to, practical ones that are not cost-prohibitive, so that there is not the growing inequities that exist within green goals on the whole.
Thank you. The opportunity for a 30-second follow-up? Dylan?
Thank you. Just because I ran out of time, I want to talk a little bit more about my Davis Tree Agenda, which you can find at dylanfordavis.org/issues. But, you know, it's, again, really important that we expand tree canopy, again, in a climate crisis that we're already in. One of, a couple of the things that we can do is we can better enforce the rules already on the books in terms of what property owners have to do to maintain the trees that are already on their properties. I work with some folks from the local chapter of the Sierra Club that I see here today to develop a tree restoration agenda that we can work with our indigenous community on in the, you know, broader Yolo County and Davis area. Again, we're already here in this climate crisis, and that means that we have to work urgently to address it. Thank you.
Any additional 30-second follow-up?
Yes, I would, thank you. So, you know, I'm glad that the CAP came up, because unless we stick to it, it's just a document that sits there. You know, when it was created in 2016, at that time, we were looking at, what, like 560-something thousand metric tons of carbon dioxide? And then what are the goals that we're trying to meet with that? And a lot of those are through our vehicle miles. And so when we talked about bike paths, one of the things that really can help us move the needle is increasing walk and bikeability in Davis. And we do that through densification, and densification near public transit as well, so that that way we can all enjoy a little more, you know, cleaner living.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next audience question. "What is your plan to address homeless encampments in Davis?" And I believe we begin with Linda? Did I already do you first?
I think it did. Okay.
If that's the case, then we would begin first with Victor.
I think it would be Victor. I thought so, but I'm fine.
I told you sometimes this happens.
I don't care.
Let's start with you.
Let's recognize something here.
And we'll go from there.
Supreme Court issued a decision quite recently, the Grants Pass case, and that meant that they basically criminalized homelessness, in my view, which I think was the bad direction to go in. And we've seen as a result an influx of the unhoused here into Davis. And so what can we do about that? What's happening? Well, we've got a couple of things going. We've got Paul's Place, we've got a respite center that's open during the day on some days. But what can we do more with that? We need to work together with them. The respite center's only open certain hours and is closed on the weekends and is closed by four. I think we need to expand those hours. I think we need to look at perhaps shifting the days that it is open and closed, because the biggest time for folks coming downtown are on the weekends, and those are the two days the respite center's closed. So I think we need to look at that, perhaps shifting those days. Frankly, I think we need to have a fully-staffed person who answers the phone when somebody is calling about an issue that's happening downtown that we're not all trained to deal with. Get the person who is trained there, but answer the darn phone so we know that that will be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. "What is your plan to address homeless encampments in Davis?" Now go to Victor.
So I think that, you know, when we're going to talk about the unhoused and those that are experiencing housing insecurity, I know that the question is about encampments, but it's also important to recognize that it's a continuum of supports that we provide for everyone that's experiencing housing insecurity. And the moment that somebody is doing that, we want to be able to provide support so that they're back in homes and they don't become chronically unhoused. And so I really think that this is where, you know, the Housing Trust Fund can be effective in terms of aiding individuals that are housing insecure in getting, like, let's say, first and last month's rent, right? And I think that that's an important piece. But then, you know, obviously, the question is about encampments, so we're talking about chronically unhoused neighbors that we have, and how do we treat them, you know, provide supports to allow them to, you know, be here with dignity? And I think that, you know, Paul's Place is a really great example of how we can provide those supports, but also making sure that we do so cost-effectively. You know, I think that the respite center's hours are obviously of question in terms of how much support can they do with how often they're open, but also the cost of what they come at. And so prioritizing and directing funds so that we can staff those.
Thank you. Again, "What is your plan to address homeless encampments in Davis?" Dylan.
So this is something that people talk to me about, ask me about, you know, almost essentially on a daily basis at the farmer's market, while we're out canvassing, people sending emails and, you know, calling to the campaign. I'm proud, you know, of my existing leadership on this, and I want to continue that if elected to the Davis City Council. In 2020, or between 2020 and 2021, I was proud to lead a coalition of concerned residents that were mostly aiming to look to reform our public safety systems in the wake of George Floyd's murder. I'm glad that eventually many of our recommendations were accepted, including the creation of the new Davis Department of Social Services and Housing, which, you know, houses, ironically enough, so many of our homeless services here for the City of Davis. And last spring, when an attacker was targeting unhoused folks in our community, we saw just how important it was to have this new Department of Social Services and Housing partnering with the police to get vulnerable unhoused people off the streets and into emergency housing. Again, that's the kind of leadership that I think we need to bring more of to the Davis City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. The opportunity for a 30-second follow-up? Yes, Linda?
We have another very big, important partner here in working on this issue, and that's our county, Yellow County. A lot of the funding can come through Yellow County to help us with their services here in town. And having a point person that they can work with is very important. And now we do have that point person in Dana Bailey. And let's foster that relationship further so that we can work together on this issue that is so important, especially, well, I shouldn't say especially, but by our district. On F Street, there have been many encampments there, many fires there, many issues there. We need to work together with our police, our fire, our county, and one another on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Dylan?
That's a great segue into what I was going to bring up, because when I ran four years ago, there was a person who showed up to one of my meet and greets and said that she had had a daughter who experienced some substance use issues and was temporarily unhoused. And so she said that she had a number of relationships with the people who were living unhoused along F Street and, you know, could take me down there to talk with some of those folks and learn more about how the city could better serve them. I was glad that I took up that opportunity, because, you know, across the board, what the folks that I talked to that day told me was that more of our homeless outreach and homeless services as a city need to be driven by what their concerns are more than what some state mandate is or what we as a city want to do for them. So we need to work with their concerns first backward to designing policy to better serve them. Thank you.
Okay. Victor, did you have a follow-up?
Yes, I would, thank you. You know, I think that, I'm really glad that the county came up, because I believe that one of the key roles for a city council person is the ability to collaborate. And that's not just something that I teach our students, but also have put in place as a leader. And I think that that collaboration and recognition of trying to address specific problems and trying to be efficient with the use of funds is really necessary in order to talk about this. And I think that the thing that hasn't come up that also has to be is, you know, is what kind of mental health supports can we provide individuals that are not being addressed across our city and our county?
Thank you. Our next audience question has to do with tree cover. "What can the Davis City Council do to improve the state of our tree cover?" It's a two-part question. Is employing city staff the answer? And I believe the first response goes to Victor.
This time it is me. This time it is me. So I think that the best example is if you look at the downtown Davis plan and you think about where the canopy is best, maybe one that goes unnoticed or unseen, is there are five quark oaks on Olive Drive that are absolutely beautiful. They're massive. And they provide a real canopy cover and one that I think we would be proud to have in other parts of our downtown and across the city. And so, but we also need to address the changing needs of what trees should be planted. Because of the number of triple-digit days that we have during the hottest times of year, the same trees are not the ones. So I believe that, you know, if we're not going to, you know, continue our partnership, or I should say, the question is about staff. I think that having high-quality staff is excellent to do, and that's why we should be paying livable wages and comparable wages to do so, so that you have that expertise. But if not, we should be reliant on our nonprofit partnership for their expertise and their volunteerism and work, because that's how we get so many trees planted by Tree Davis. Ninety-five percent of our new trees per year are planted by them.
Okay. And again, what can the city council, Davis City Council, do to improve the state of our tree cover? And is employing city staff the answer? Dylan?
Thank you so much. And just to tackle the, you know, question head-on, yes, that is the core of the issue here. There's just not enough staffing at the city to be able to review the various development plans that are coming through the city on a, you know, regular basis. Each, you know, there's a whole set of rules about how trees are to be protected during a redevelopment of a project or how they are to be protected in the development of a new development in town. And essentially, none of them are enforced, as I mentioned a couple of minutes ago, because, again, there's not enough staffing at the city to be able to take a look at those plans. And again, it's incredibly important that we take a look at how we can step up this really urgently. And one of the biggest, you know, things that we can do there is increase the staffing there. And I think there's a lot of ways that we can partner with developers in funding some of that staffing need that's there right now. Thank you.
Again, what can the Davis City Council do to improve the state of our tree cover? And is employing city staff the answer? Lynda?
Money. Money. We need the revenue in order to support any program like this. Yes, it's important. Of course, it's important. And it's up to the city council to be weighing that against providing services for the unhoused, economic development, everything. I'm just going down, climate resiliency. And it's where do we put those priorities? And that's what you're looking for us to do. Staffing would be fabulous. Now, if you've been over to where Bretton Woods is being built now, that big road that just got built between the hospital and Bretton Woods, it's lined with crepe myrtles. That's not what we're supposed to be putting there. We're supposed to be putting not bushes, but trees. So, yeah, we don't have the ability to have that type of oversight. We have oak shade down in the Oak Shade Shopping Center in South Davis. There's no plant in there to keep the trees. In fact, the trees there are dying. So, again, we need the staff to do that. We need the funds to make that happen. Vote yes for Measure Q, please. Thank you.
Opportunity for a 30-second follow-up. Yes, Dylan?
Just very quickly, again, because I'm running out of time with these shorter timelines. One of the ways that we can, you know, fund some of these things, and you can see more about this on my website, I want to explore green banks. And this is something that a number of other local communities have done in partnership with neighboring municipalities, is, you know, pull together and try to figure out how we can work with local investors to fund some of these climate resiliency, expansion of tree canopy projects. There is a money problem here, and there's some innovative solutions that other municipalities have tried to be able to, you know, tackle that challenge, I think, head-on.
Additional follow-up? Yep. Okay, I'll move to the next audience question. Question is, what should the city's response be in the face of violent protests? And we asked that question first, I believe, of Dylan?
This is an interesting question. Okay, so, you know, I was, I mentioned being at a number of advocacy efforts around the wake of George Floyd's murder. And so I went to all of the rallies and protests and marches that took place after that. I just have to, in terms of the flavor of the question, have to point out that all of these were peaceful. No one was hurt. There was no violence at any of these things. There's not a big history of violence in Davis activism, so I just want to point that out at the beginning. But I think it's important that we make sure that Davis is a community that's safe for everyone. And that includes being sure that people are able to safely practice their First Amendment rights, but also be sure that the people in the surrounding neighborhoods and community are safe as well. Again, I'm proud, as someone who's been an activist and an organizer for 13-plus years, to have led many marches, protests, rallies, that have all been peaceful and have all been well-organized because the community came together to make sure it was that, because that's what our values are. And I think we can continue that here in the community of Davis. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, what should the city's response be in the face of violent protests? Lynda?
Create safe space. I think my number-one job of being a city council person would be public safety and making sure that all of us in this community feel safe and can also feel heard and know that they can be heard in a safe space. I know it's a circular thing, round and round in that regard. I do recognize that. I don't believe we have had any violent protests. We've had some issues on campus with some things going on there recently, but on the city grounds itself, I'm not aware of what's happened there. There are concerns of folks feeling unsafe in our community, and that concerns me greatly. And I want to make sure that we can do everything we can to make sure that everyone does feel safe in this community and assuring as well First Amendment rights to speak. So, thank you.
Thank you. Again, how should the city's response be in the face of violence, violent, sorry, protests? Victor?
If we're going to be an inclusive and thriving community, then everyone needs to be safe. I think that's obvious, maybe, as part of the question. And while some of the protests that maybe are part of the reference for this question occurred on the university campus, you can't ignore that the impact of those were felt in our community and the tensions as part of that. And so I think that this, you know, this speaks, again, to the need for collaboration. And in this case, I'm not talking about with the county, but with our, you know, the university, which is a really large organization that we share geographically with. I think that providing for safety is key. And what that can look like is, you know, if you take the, you know, our law enforcement and the training that they receive, which is extensive, ensuring that de-escalation training is part of that, and how to be able to, you know, intervene if there are unsafe practices or harm that is being caused to individuals.
Any additional?
It's possible that the thrust of this, you know, question, we have a very active Moms for Liberty chapter here, operating in Yolo County. And there's been a number of incidents here in Davis and the Davis community, on campus, in Woodland, where these folks have been involved as agitators, you know, trying to wedge exclusion in a community that prides itself on inclusion. And I'm proud, amongst all of those other things, that I've been a leader, you know, some of you are familiar with the Hate Free Together Initiative that the city, the county, and the university are working together on. I've, you know, at every meeting that that's been discussed here in this room, I've come to this podium right in front of my dais here and advocated that there needs to be a strong physical safety component of the Hate Free Together Initiative that I think is too focused on rhetorical hate.
Any other response? Additional? Victor?
Yeah, I think-
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Go, speak, speak again.
Thanks. Yeah, I think that, you know, when it comes to people's First Amendment rights, that, you know, we have run into a lot of challenges in terms of what many people feel is harassment and making them feel unsafe. And this is something that I have been combating and pushing back against for years now as the representative of Davis Teachers Association and ensuring that all of our students are feeling respected and seen. And, you know, to bring up the chair for Moms for Liberty that's locally, you know, made a lot of people feel unsafe, I think that we have to acknowledge the challenges of the limitations of what free speech allows people and where the lines are drawn and ensure that everyone is well-informed of those before we consider whether or not something is, in fact, being, I think, unsafe, or if that was the way the question, the question was worded.
Thank you.
I'll put my hand up higher.
Sorry, I just didn't see it.
No, you're fine. I've been a victim of hate. I've been beat up for being gay. I have lost a job for being gay. I know what it's like to be ostracized. I know what it's like to be called the other. Nobody wants to be in that position. I am saddened that the synagogue that is in our district is now building a fence around it, that the last one in the region. That saddens me. And I also feel that it's not all to be on the police. It's all of us together need to come together on this, that when hate happens, we all show up and say, stop. It has to stop now for all manifestations of hate. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate all of your responses to the audience questions. That concludes our audience questions now. Thank you, candidates, and thank you for those of you in the audience who have submitted your questions. We'll now move to the candidates' one-minute closing statements. In accordance with the opening draw, we begin our closing by hearing from the first candidate, Lynda Diaz.
Well, again, I say thank you. Thank you to the League and thank you to all of you for coming out this evening and all of you who are going to be watching this tomorrow. An engaged electorate is key to, again, keeping our democracy going. Again, I ask you to look at what we all stand for. We all want housing. We all want to address our climate. We all want to address fiscal responsibility. Look to the person who has the experience to get that done. Look to the person who has the relationships with our other electeds to get this work done in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Your one-minute closing statement, Victor?
Thank you so much to everyone for taking the time to be here tonight. You know, we've discussed a lot of issues that are currently on the minds of individuals, of you all for submitting questions and from the League. But what we know is that we won't always know what is coming up. And what we want from a city council member is someone that we can trust to be present, to be responsive, and that has the leadership and knows how to stand up for what is right. And I think that if you look at my track record as a leader in our community, with how connected I've been in working in a classroom, serving this 8,300 students of our school district and all of their families, I think you can see that I am resolute when I believe something is right for our community. And my hope is that I could do that from the city council and be able to provide us with an inclusive and thriving community going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. And for your one-minute closing statement, Dylan?
Thanks so much, everyone, for your time and attention tonight. My name is Dylan Horton, and I'm running for Davis City Council to build a city that works for everyone. We've talked about a lot of important issues this evening, housing, economic development, climate change. And for me, what ties all of that together is the belief that Davis should be a place where no one is left behind. I've spent over a decade fighting for affordable housing, criminal justice reform, and making our local government more responsive to the needs of its residents. As Chair of the Davis Police Accountability Commission, I've seen what happens when leaders collaborate on addressing our most pressing issues. You can learn more about my campaign and the platform that I've put forward at dylanfordavis.org. And on this website, you can also contact me with questions and get involved with the campaign. If you believe in affordable housing and inclusive community and a just Davis where everyone, including students, seniors, and working families, has an opportunity to thrive, I'm asking for your vote. Let's build a Davis that reflects the values we hold most dear. Thank you.
And as you all have thanked us, we thank you. And now, our audience, will you please join me in a warm round of applause and appreciation for tonight's candidates? In closing, League members and the candidates remind you that voter information and candidate materials are available to view outside the chamber and on the candidates' websites. This forum has been recorded and can be viewed on both the League of Women Voters Davis Area website and the Davis Media Access website through Election Day. Before departing, please remember to complete and return your brief evaluation survey. Your feedback is essential to ensure these free, nonpartisan League forums best meet our voters' needs. Thank you to my fellow League members for facilitating tonight's forum and Davis Media Access for the forum cosponsorship. Finally, all of us at the League thank you, our audience, for your attention, participation, and your gracious sharing of your audience questions. This concludes our closing statements and our candidate, District Two candidate forum. Thank you.